Ready?
I'm ready.
Okay. The regular meeting of the Belville zoning board of adjustment for the town of Belville for October 6, 2016 will now come to order. Clerk call to roll.
Caruso? Delgertio?
Here.
Giordano?
Here.
Lucci? Albona?
Here.
Smith? Albona? Sheldon?
Here.
Casa?
That's it. We got six. Okay, one more one please stand for the pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Madam Secretary, has this notice been given in accordance with the Sunshine law?
The certificate of this meeting has been advertised according to the Sunshine law.
Okay. Gentlemen, do you have a copy of the minutes from last month?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, let's see if there's any... Anybody have any problems with it?
No.
No? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Caruso. Maybe Mr. Valano seconded by Mr. Caruso. Clerk call to roll.
Delgertio?
Yes.
Giordano?
Yes.
Albona?
Yes.
Valano?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Yes.
That's it. Now, case is to be adjourned. Since we have no resolution, it will be moralized anyway. Okay, case is to be adjourned. I understand, Mr. Gassillon, the first case, King Street?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. As I understated, there's only five members available to hear the case.
Right.
Therefore, it's a devarious...
Because Mr. Albona is stepping down on this even though we have six members here.
Therefore, based on the fact there's only five members available to hear the case, I'd like to adjourn you to that regular scheduled meeting of the board.
Yes, you will have an adjournment. So anybody in the audience, ZB 2015-34, 27 King Street, Delia. That will be adjourned to our next regular meeting on November 3 at 7:00 p.m. There will be no further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper. And that will be the first case on our agenda.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Second case, I believe that's yours too.
It is. Carattonis, the COE, has been on the agenda for a long time. What has happened is he has lost his tenant and therefore hasn't been able to follow up with Mr. Di Lorenzo's office. The tenant was waiting more and he has no tenant. So at this point, I have no choice but to withdraw the application without presence.
It was my understanding that the tenant was approved.
Yeah, that's correct. I told his associate, Mr. Power Halli, a couple of weeks ago to come in and fill out the paperwork.
But he had to fill out the paper, which he didn't do because he was no longer going to be the tenant.
Oh, okay. So that's just being dismissed then?
Withdrawn without presence.
Withdrawn without presence.
Have you corresponded with the board now, Mr. Gassillon? We'd probably like to have a letter in the file that you're withdrawing without presence.
I think you have on record, but if you want a letter to follow, give you a letter.
Okay. Do we have to vote on this?
No.
No.
Okay, so ZB 2015-32, 318, 320, Cortlandt Street, Caratonis Realty Limited Liability Corporation. That is being withdrawn by the attorney for the applicant, Mr. Gassillon.
Correct.
Okay?
Now, I'll follow up a little bit.
Yes.
Thank you.
Gina, do you have the letter for Washington Avenue? In the meantime, there is a case that's on the agenda, it's number five on the agenda. ZB 2016-07, 334, 336 Franklin Avenue, estate of Lucci... Legieta... Albona. Okay. Charlie, it looks like Charlie Magellino is the executor. I'm destroying his name.
Charlene. Charlene. Markigiano.
He's the daughter. The applicant is proposing to change the use of one unit on the first floor from office use to residential. The dwelling was constructed as a four-family residential dwelling in 1928 and a permit was obtained from the building departed in 1967 to convert one of the original four residential units to a store. This was originally not on the agenda, but I said at the last minute to put it on only to announce to anybody who's in the audience who's interested in this case that it will be adjourned to next month to be the first hearing for the first time due to the fact we did not get our experts' reports until last Friday, the 30th, which did not give the public 10 days to examine everything. So that is being adjourned to next month. No further notices either in the mail or in the newspaper. And that will be on November 3, 2016. Okay. Now, we have a letter here.
So I am...
Did you go? Yes.
Thank you.
You earned your money tonight. Very good.
Thank you.
Okay. We have a transmission dated September 28, 2016.
What?
Okay, from... From the attorney, Richard W. Valerio. Okay, that's concerning the third case on our agenda, ZB 2016-04, 750 Washington Avenue, Machinsky. Okay. Dear Miss Ciccarelli... Ciccarelli. Ciccarelli. The matter was before the board on September 1, 2016. It was adjourned because the notice and publication had not been made to the Nutley residents within 200 feet of the property. Notice of the scheduled hearing on October 6, 2016 was made by personal service on all of the Nutley property owners within 200 feet of the property and a certified list of those property owners and proof of mailing is being submitted by separate cover. Arrangements were made to publish notice of the October 6, 2016 hearing date with the Nutley son, but it was erroneously scheduled too late to meet the 10-day notice requirement. Therefore, we canceled that publication since it would not be effective. Accordingly, I would request that the board adjourn the matter from October 6, 2016 to November 3, 2016 and make an announcement at the public meeting of the adjournment and rescheduling so that reservice of notice will not be necessary. We will then arrange for publication of notice in the Nutley son for the November 3, 2016 hearing. Additionally, we will agree to an additional 60-day extension of the statutory time for a decision in this matter. Please advise if we require anything further. And that is Richard W. Valerio Esquera. So, anyone who's interested in that case, ZB 2016-04, that is being adjourned to the November 3, 2016 meeting. So that's going to be a busy night, but Mr. Gassillon's case will come first. Okay. Now, to get to the meat-potatoes of tonight. Okay, the case that will be heard tonight will be the fourth case on our agenda, ZB 2016-06, 58 Belmont Avenue, Paterno. Okay? Come on up, sir.
May I be, Mr. Chairman, members of the board? My name is Paul Jemmas. J-E-M-A-S. I'm the attorney for Anthony Paterno, the applicant.
Okay. You may proceed, sir.
Yes, briefly, this is a building that has been, as far as we can determine, for the last 70 years a fourth ancestor, going back to before the ordinance changed. It is a retarded and a commercial zone. The applicant has owned it since 1986 and he's been paying taxes and doing all the used to the registered property with the DCA and with the township as a fourth ancestor. Our records will show that that's what it is. We have three witnesses for you. We're going to lead off with Mr. Jeff Stiles, who's a professional planner who's done some investigative, data work here with documentation and all produce. We then have Mr. Paterno, who's here to tell you about how the building is laid out, which has separate meters and everything else. It's always been that way. He doesn't need to change it still, but it's important enough. And then we have Councilwoman Burke here, who is young enough to remember what the property was in 1959 and 1960.
Are you sure she was that young?
Yes. So with that, Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I would bring Mr. Stiles up.
Well, first, I would like to swear man, Mr. Di Lorenzo. Swear.
Thank you, there.
With regard to this matter, do you swear the testimony you're about to give was of the truth?
Yes, I do.
State your name.
Frank Di Lorenzo.
He's the zoning officer for the township of Belville.
Correct.
Mr. Di Lorenzo, concerning your denial letter, okay, it has here, and signed by you, that the tax records, I assume you made a... We made a search of the tax records?
Correct.
And that it was listed as a two-family from 1945 to 1954 and a four-family from 1955 to the present. Is that correct?
Correct. That's what we got from the tax records.
Okay. Now, there's two building permits. The one from 1937 just says an alteration. Do you know what that alteration was for?
No, no, it was very vague.
Very vague. Okay, but 1949, it says that there was a construction of a four-car garage?
Correct.
Okay. Any other testimony you may have to give to us concerning this case?
Not at this point. Maybe as the planners are, maybe they might...
Can you explain to us why this case came before us in the first place?
He was selling it.
Excuse me?
He was selling it.
Oh, he was selling. Okay. So what he needed is a...
A CO.
A CO.
Right, a CO.
Okay. All right. Now you may proceed.
Thank you.
Unless you have questions of him.
No.
Okay. Would you like to raise your right hand, please? Thank you. With regard to this application, do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
State your names and your last name, please.
Jeffrey Stiles, S-T-I-L-E-S.
First name is Jeffrey with a J?
J-A-R-Y.
Thank you.
Mr. Stiles, would you discuss with the board the credentials?
Yes, I'm a licensed professional planner in the state of New Jersey. Been so licensed since 1985. I've represented applicants before zoning and planning boards in the state of New Jersey at probably over 100 municipalities. I've also been the consultant to a number of municipalities throughout my years preparing boards.
Can we name one or two of the rings?
On the municipalities, I was the borough of Caldwell Consultant, Roseland, a number in Sussex County, Augenburg, Moorestown.
Okay, that's good. He's an expert. Will be accepted as an expert.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Stiles, are you familiar with the application before the board?
Yes, I am.
And you've done some investigative work with regard to that, is that correct?
That is correct.
Would you discuss what you've discovered with the board in determining why this applicant is entitled to this ability?
Yeah, first, there was a number of record searches that were performed to determine what the tax certifications were on the property, any permits you heard from the runs out about the research that he did in his letter. And we went further than that and obtained some additional information relative to the property to demonstrate that this property has been a multi-family use ever since its inception. I also had the opportunity to review the old zoning ordinances in this community, which I was very surprised that Mr. Di Lorenzo's office had them back to 1923, which is not something that happens along municipalities. So with that, I can present a number of documents that were obtained and reference those and then talk a little bit about what I found when reviewing the zoning ordinance and how it all relates to this property being a pre-existing non-conforming use within the ordinance and how it should continue to remain so as a four-family unit. I guess the first exhibit I would give you is a series of photographs from the internet that show the property, just to give you a sense of what the property looks like and where it is. Counselor, do you want me to mark these?
A1, please. And that's a photo of the subject property off the internet?
Yes.
Okay. A1.
And just to quickly let the record show what A1 represents, the first page on A1 is just a photograph taken from Google Maps using street view that shows the front of the property in question at 58 Belmont Avenue, which is also block 103, block 1. Second page shows the side view, actually the...
The first page is what?
Is a front view photograph of the property itself.
It says 62 Belmont.
No, that's the one on the right, the one on the corner.
Yeah, it's just the way that Google represents it that way. But the property that you are looking at, the photograph, is 58.
Thank you.
The second page represents a photograph taken from Lawrence Street, because this property is on the corner, and shows on the right three of the four-car garage that was permitted back in, I guess, 1937 or about to be... I'm sorry, I think it was later than that.
49.
49, I'm sorry. The aerial view on the third page, just looking down, the property is highlighted in yellow, the subject building. And then the lower pictures are just additional photographs that are shown. And we're back to page one. So that just gives you a sort of an indication of what the property looks like and what's there today. The second exhibit I have, if you mark the original, it's A2, which I believe you're on the reference, this is the letter from the municipality.
Mr. Di Lorenzo's letter dated July 15.
We all have a copy. I checked for him.
I do not. If you have a copy, it's still a hard to find. We don't, we probably don't need to mark it. Normally, we don't. Out of order. Normally, we don't mark...
Your own excuse. And just quickly, what that letter indicates is the letter for the applicant indicating that he has to come before the board to get these certificate of occupants and zoning permit. And it indicates that the tax records were reviewed, as was indicated previously. The tax records indicate from 1945 to 1954, it was a two-family structure, and from 1955 until today, a four-family structure, and that is what's indicated, the building permits that were called. The next exhibit I have is a couple of photocopies out of the old telephone records from the municipality from 1970 and 1960.
That should be A2. A2.
Okay.
This should be A3, though. No, no.
And what this represents, if you look at the address of 58 Belmont, in both instances, both 1970 and 1960, phone books, there were four individual units listed there with occupants having...
Taken.
They're on phone numbers. So again, just continuing to represent that the property has been used as a four-family dwelling for quite some time. Next item I have is the property record, 40 subject property down 58 Belmont Avenue. And this one is dated from 1907... I'm sorry, 2007, September. That again shows the tax records, which indicates that the property at that point was also in the tax records as a four-family unit.
Sorry, that's A3?
A3.
A3.
I was looking at the directory. What are we...
Oh, this is the tax record that this property is on. If you look at the right-hand corner, it says the number of units, four-family.
But this is as of 2007?
That one is 2000 and...
Updated on 9/7/07.
Yeah, 2007, that's correct. I also have records from the state of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs for registering a multi-family unit. I have one from February 2008, which again shows it as a four-family structure.
Should be A4.
I also have the same record again from the Department of Community Affairs from 2002.
A5.
A5. So that's the same record, indicates same type of record, but from 2002, March that year, also indicating four units within the building. And what we'll mark as A6 is a rental certificate of continued occupancy that was issued by the code enforcement department here with the municipality in June of 15. Mark A6 now, but also indicates at that time a four-unit dwelling.
A5 is 2002 and A6 is...
It's 2007.
No, A4 is 2007.
I'm sorry. A4 is 2007 and A5 is 2002. A6 is dated June 5, 2015.
Okay, that's from Belville. Yep.
Correct. A7?
Yes.
A7, that would be an application, a rest levelling board, township of Belville, also indicating the property, the subject property, four units and it's actually a fee for the apartments, for registering the apartments at $10 per unit. Let's go. This is actually...
A7.
Dated August 10, 2015.
Nothing before that?
Pardon?
Nothing before that?
Not.
So they didn't register before that?
They've been registered services to... The applicant will testify it's been registered services to the municipal required. It could be registered. These are the documents that we have.
Well, I know the municipality requires registration before 15.
These are the only documents that are available for us now, Mr. Vice Chairman.
So I guess I...
Well, there's another one dated... I have one checked out. That's dated May 2012.
Yes, inspection date 2012, issue date 2016.
Can I ask Mr. Di Lorenzo a question? Maybe the cuts would work, too. Mr. Di Lorenzo, when did the zone change that made it illegal to be for making because of the density? Because I understand this is in an RC zone?
Right. It's an RC zone, which would allow multifamily, the density would be there. But it looks like if you go back into records, that it was allowed since '23, when it was built then, but going forward into the next ordinance, I think it was allowed also. Even though it was in a business zone, it allowed residential.
But do you know when it became a problem? Let's put it that way.
Became a problem?
In other words, that it was no longer allowed, either because of the density or because of the zone?
No, the reason why I'm sent here is because I don't have a record of it that it's a four-family.
He's not saying it wasn't allowed. He's saying he had... If I'm saying it, no, please, quit me. He's saying that he has no accommodation to prove that it was a four-family.
I'm not arguing with that.
And I like that.
All I'm saying is that would mean nothing if it was allowed currently. All I'm saying is when did it no longer become allowed?
I don't think you're saying that.
Well, that's what I'm asking.
In 1955, the records go back to 55, four families.
Right.
In 1955, for Frank, was a four-family permitted. It looks like residential uses were allowed in that zone the way the ordinance was written up.
And it changed again in '77 or...
Yeah, in '77, ordinance changed again, and that's what... And I think it stayed the same. I think it was still RC. It went from business in 55, '23 was business, 55 was business, which allowed the residential units in there. But then in '77, it changed. I think it was RC also. But I don't have a clear-cut record saying that, yeah, he has a four-family building. That's what...
So I guess to your point, the question I was going to ask your planner, what was allowed in 55?
In 1955, I have reviewed the ordinance. It was a business zone, but all residential uses were allowed in that business zone regardless of...
So my second question, which will kind of close the door for which my colleague has to be brought up, the only question we have left is that in A3, what, you give us this, right? And it says in writing to, I guess, to Mr. Di Lorenzo, that, you know, in 1957, it was assessed as a four-family, right? But in, you know, we didn't mark this one. In writing in Mr. Di Lorenzo's letter, it's two-year difference. I just want to know which one to write.
The one's the Frank Cosarelli's office. This is the Cosarelli's office.
Ah, wrong Frank.
Yeah, see, if you see here.
Ah, okay, so you're saying this is it?
That's what I got. That's what I got from that.
That's the date, which is the 55 date, which is the more important date in my book.
Exactly. I agree with you.
Okay.
And this was a permitted use in 55.
55.
In my opinion, yes.
Yeah, okay.
From 1923 through...
Yeah, going all the way down.
Me, I just go 55. I go back to 55. And that's the date I look for.
And the structure was built until 1955.
Yeah, so it's obvious.
So my only question, like I said, if I could just clear it up, was this note here? Now we know what the note means.
And I think the idea of us submitting the tax records up until current day is to show that it's been a four-family in property.
Just so you know, this one doesn't look as tax records as far as being legal.
No.
You know, does it mean that it's a legal use? Because the tax department apparently had ten families.
No, I agree. I think what I was trying to establish for that information was there was not an abandonment of that.
It's continuous use.
It's continuous use.
Yeah, that's all I'm saying. I look for dates that are conjunction with what was allowed at that time. And yours, and Mr. Di Lorenzo's office, and you were saying that you were using it and it was allowed in 1955. Correct?
That's right.
And you're just saying that it might have been, but you don't have anything saying that in your file.
I don't have anything saying that.
Right, that's it.
Nothing on a record or a card that it was given a four-family at some point.
Stacks.
Right.
That's my only question. Okay, okay.
And the other question that I would have, which you may get to, is has it been a continuous four-family use since 55?
Yeah, to the best of our knowledge, that's why we presented all the tax records.
That would help if we had testimony on that.
And I think there's going to be further testimony on that.
What we presented plus the owners here will say for the last since 1986, you bought it as a four-family and continued to use it.
I'm not saying we're...
Okay, all right.
You said, some kind of continuous use. And that's what would have helped if you had, you know, rent control and stuff back then when you first bought it, not, you know, 2012 or 2013.
What we do have, Mr. Vice Chairman, is all the records that he's been paying for as a four-family and...
Again, taxes don't mean that.
Well, I was mayor before, he was in mid-the-...
I doubt somebody would reduce the amount of apartments and not try to...
I know. You know, it's... I don't assume that.
I mean, traditionally, as a planner, we'll look at these. If we can't find records, ah, we look at the tax records. Because you're right, Mr. Chairman. Typically, if you reduce it to a two-family, you're going to look for a tax reduction.
A gigantic tax reduction, especially if you cut it in half.
Again, I don't assume that's not my... I'm not putting a case on.
Stiles, as a result of your analysis and your review, you have a professional opinion or expert opinion as to what's going on here?
I think based upon the information that we are... I was able to obtain and look at the ordinances, it's my professional opinion that this does meet the test as a pre-existing non-conforming use and that the board is in its right to grant that status and provide the owner the property with that certificate.
Have you gone into the property?
Not inside the property.
You haven't been inside the property.
There's four meters, there's...
Okay, then we could have us a paternal testimony, as long as you're satisfied with your testimony. Okay. Mr. Paternal, then, I assume you're putting him up. Does any public have questions of the planner? Any members of the public? Any members of the board? Any members of the public, any members of the board?
Mr. DiLorenzo's letter indicates that it was taxed as a two-family from 1945 to 1954. Just looking at the concrete tax record that was faxed from Mr. Cozzaroli's firm, I noticed that it was pointing to this, it was built in 1912. I'm curious, do you have any idea what the use of this building was from 1912 to 1945, when it appeared on the tax rosters?
No, but I do know from 1923 on, a four-unit building would be permitted by ordinance there, and I'm assuming 1923 was when the ordinance started.
The ordinance started, the only one started in 23. Before that, there was nothing, so he just did whatever he wanted to do basically.
It's actually an interesting read, if you haven't read the 23 on the board, it's all about industrial property and gas stations.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, I'll call this paternal.
Yes.
Thanks for your time.
Would you raise your right hand, please, regarding this application, use for the testimony you're about to give. Could you just state your names and your last name, please?
Jonathan Pater.
Mr. Paterno, you're the owner of the property?
Yes.
And when did you purchase, when did you acquire title of the property?
1986.
And you're familiar with the interior, the exterior of the property and the garage, isn't it?
Correct.
Do you have photographs that you brought with you of the interior?
Yes.
If we could mark that, Mr. Chairman.
What's A8?
A8.
Do you have them marked?
They're basic photographs.
Okay, and they're all put together as a group?
Yes, they are.
Mark it, mark the groups A8.
When were these photographs taken, Mr. Paterno?
Excuse me?
When were these photos taken?
August, January, July, August, around there.
This year?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, would you explain the layout of the interior of the property, the twelfth building and everything, how things work, including the electric heating and that kind of thing?
Yeah, if you look at the pictures, the front door, yeah, we can get the picture. There's eight entrances, four in the front door, four in the back. Okay, and then, so you open the front door, you have the first and second floor on the front, on the first floor, and you walk 13 stairs, and you have the third and fourth apartment on the second floor.
And it was like that when you purchased it, right?
Yeah.
And would you explain how the heating works for each of those units and everything?
Yeah, there's four boilers, hot water boilers, there's four gas meters, and there's four electric heaters.
Well, there's a fifth electric heater.
There's a fifth one for the landlord to pay for the lights going, and then there's four garages.
And who pays for the gas and electric?
Each tenant pays their own gas and electric, and they have their own boiler.
And that's part of your lease?
Yeah, four, 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 early four.
Since you acquired the property in 1986, has there ever been a discontinuation of using the property as a four-family?
No.
Since you acquired it in 1986, did you make any structural changes at all? It's exactly the way, except for maintenance, routine maintenance and that sort of thing.
Yes.
At this time, I have no further questions, Mr. Paterno.
Mr. Paterno, these are railroad rooms?
Yeah.
And the boilers that are on the second page, those boilers are heating and hot water tankless?
Yes.
Okay. Any other questions by members of the board? Did you paint the outside white?
Yes.
Okay. Before you painted it on the first floor, did it look like new bricks were added on?
What happened was, targeted a year ago.
Oh, was that what?
I got all the paperwork, I had an engineer, the whole bit.
The white side of the building?
Yeah, so, the only idea was take brick out, put brick in, but I did everything the right way, all permits and all that, so after I painted, the whole building white.
No, that wasn't the reason I asked the question, was I saw the new bricks under the paint.
Yeah.
I assumed there may have been a store down there at one time, that's why.
Targeted.
Any other questions by members of the board? Any questions by members of the public of this witness? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, our last opening, not this, before we break here, would be Marie Trumbull.
Ah, I would like to hold off on that.
Very well, Mr. Chairman.
Gentlemen, do you have enough evidence to rule on this without having this Burke testify? The reason given is technically, we try to avoid any member of the council testifying before this board if it is not, unless it's absolutely necessary.
I think we have enough to talk on.
Mr. Valado, you want to say something?
My thought is this, I'm not going to tell counsel that I have enough, or whether I do have enough or not. It's him, whether he wants to put more on or less. So we just talked about that 10 minutes ago, about, you know, you bring, you bring the kitchen sink, and if you don't need it, great. So if he wants to put it on, I have no problem with it, however, I know you're concerned, but I'd like to hear from counsel.
Our counsel?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I think you meant the council.
No, you. What's your opinion?
I think the basic approach is, if the board at this point, regardless of whether or not the next witness is on the jury by, if...
To me, it's irrelevant.
If the board at this point has heard enough, has read enough, has seen enough to make a decision, and if Mr. Jemis doesn't push having another witness, I think we can, we can do that. We can make a decision, if there's still some issues in the air and the board wants to hear another witness, then we'll hear it.
My only concern is from either parties, you know, whether it's the audience, or if a client, or the applicant, if something doesn't go their way, I'm not looking for a grounds for an appeal from either side.
I understand that, Mr. Valado, all I'm saying is, based on everything I've ever written in the land use book, it is supposed to be...
I want it from our attorney. Basically.
Would, would...
That it.
Would your next witness add something new that we've not heard, or would it be?
No, the next witness, if we were proper, proper, the next witness, what the next witness would testify is that she, that the witness knows that in 1959 and 1960, it was a four-family, who knew the people?
All right, would she know before 55?
Hmm.
No?
No.
Then there's no reason to have that witness, because the key, the key rule here is 55.
Right. So, so the next witness would basically say, since the late 50s, it's been this four-family. Are you comfortable?
Yes, I am.
If the board discussed it, and maybe even, and you could sense where they're going, and if you feel you have to have another witness, find that way we're protected?
Again, I just want to, on the record for counsel, is that I don't have an issue, you know, I understand the chairman's concern, and that's his role, I understand that. And you as legal counsel, I'm not, I'm not looking at chairman, I'm looking at legal counsel as a thing. My mind, I, no disrespect to, no disrespect to the councilman, while they should, as a councilman, is irrelevant to me, that's my point.
I understand, I, I agree, but there, if, if there's a sense that there might be a practical issue, and if we don't need that witness to, that's why I asked if there's anything new, or if it's going to be basically fortifying what we've heard.
Before we make this decision, why don't we do this? Is there any member of the public who wishes to give testimony on this case? Because that may change things, that's why I'm asking a question.
Why doesn't the board discuss it? Mr. Jemison did a sense of where you're going, if he feels, if he feels that, based on your discussion, he needs more, then let him put them on.
So, that's the case, are you finished?
Yes, I'm finished, subject to what Mr. Rego just said, and with the understanding I might be in trouble with something on this.
So I think I put my thoughts on the record, we got in, what my hurdle was, 1955, and what was allowed. I took, I questioned Mr. DiLorenzo, and so he clarified the notes for me, and for me, I have honor for the lesson, just understood that the planner has also testified as Mr. DiLorenzo, that in 1955, it was a permitted use, correct?
Yes, that's what I heard.
And we have, because we established some degree of continuity regarding a use to in 1955. Am I correct in my...
Yes, those you are corrupting.
So, again, councilwoman, you can, because I'm concerned, you're always wanting to talk, but for me to make my decision, I don't need it, to be honest with you.
Okay, so I'm ready.
But, you know...
If we ease it, my...
I always get, I always get nervous about stifling folks who want to talk. I have a thing at that point.
There were some gaps that we needed to fill, and the next witness could fill them.
But you understand my part, Mr. Rego?
Yes.
You know, does that we afford that to the audience, or like to afford it to the applicant as well?
Well, the only reason I brought it up...
I know why, you stated that...
Because under the municipal land use law, it is stated it should be avoided if at all possible.
Right, and I understand that.
I don't know, it's been there for years.
Yeah, I don't know, we'll see.
I think we should discuss it, and depending on where we go...
So, am I clear, what my position is?
And I have no problem with this case, I'll be honest with you, because I went and looked at the property, there looks like there's never been an actual addition to the building, that that's the way it was built, okay? Based on all the expertise I've had, only properties, oh, back into the 50s, when my father plucked the business, okay? So, maybe it was changed from a two to a four, okay? But the building itself was never expanded that I can see, okay? So, that's where I'm coming from, and since the taxes picked it up as 1955, and there's been no proof that it's ever gone less than four, I see no problem with the case, to be honest with you.
Again, like I said, my hurdle was 1955, what it is, what was allowed, and what was being used at, and I think a hurdle has been made.
Yes. I concur with that, 1955 to me is the key.
Key.
I looked at that building two or three times, and I feel the same way with the chairman. There's no addition made to the building, so.
Well, let me say one thing, in the 1980s, I owned the property on Belmont Avenue, it was a four-family house.
That property?
Not that property, I'm saying on Belmont Avenue, on double...
Got a site, a lot of site prints.
And that was a four-family house in the 80s. I never knew what it was.
You mean this was a four-family house in the 80s?
No, no, the house I owned was a four-family house.
Well, what does that got to do with this house?
I was saying, four-family house was not permitted on, at the 55.
No, I didn't say that, I did not say that. All I said was, in 55, it was permitted. It's an RC zone, which takes in three and four families, and if there is a problem, or if there was a problem, it's possibly because they've lowered the density since those days. That's all I'm saying. But in 1955, it was legal, and if it stayed this way since 1955, I don't see a problem.
It is all right.
Okay.
Mr. Jemison, are you comfortable with the board moving ahead?
Yes, we would submit, Mr. Rego, and, but just briefly, I just want to thank the staff, they've been incredibly helpful throughout this, Mr. DiLorenzo.
Do I have a motion?
Motion, I'll make a motion.
Well, Mr. Caruso has an exception. Motion made by Mr. Caruso, and seconded by Mr. Montalbano, the most senior members of the board in age. Court call the roll.
Mr. Caruso.
Yes.
Del Gersio.
Yes.
Giudana.
Yes.
Matavano.
Yes.
Valado.
Yes.
Sheldon.
Yes.
Approved, six to none.
Thank you for your cooperation.
Take care. No problem. Any other case, any other things to discuss?
That is, can we adjourn?
Okay, motion to adjourn, do I get a second? Second, motion made by Mr. Mont, Mr. Valado, seconded by Mr. Giudana. All favor?
Aye.
Aye. We adjourn.